What happens when the property gives up for sale, and I had this with my client, 20 years from the inverter, but it goes up for sale, the title company wants to see the release. So, I mean, it's 20 years later, and then you gotta go back and get the release because the title company won't insure without it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, that is beautiful, though. I want to share they work.
He's trouble.
I know like the scale of it, that's my sound, like it's massive.
You're muted.
It's a big playground, so.
Okay, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Louisiana, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Dash, are you calling your role, or is James?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, then.
All right, um, Captain Conroy?
Here.
John Normile?
Here.
Jack McCann?
Here.
Mark Plazey?
Here.
Katie McLaren?
Here.
Wonderful, all members present.
Okay, so we've, uh, should we table the first, the old business case now, or do you want to wait and table it after they don't show up? Being that it went to the back, it's at the end of the, should we just leave it the way it is? Why don't we do that?
Sure.
And then we'll deal with it at the end.
Sure.
Okay, so that brings us to new business, PLZBA 2021-0019, 873 Fifth Avenue, a use variance. Copake LLC is proposing to use an unauthorized storage facility as storage for a nearby catering business. The applicant is represented by Lisa Rodriguez, architect from TAP. Hi.
Sure, um, doesn't sound like it's on, is it on?
Uh, Elizabeth Rodriguez, also known as Lisa from TAP. I thought that the Pettits would be here tonight, and unfortunately, it was my fault at the office, so they're probably communicating with it. Uh, but I can't hear them. Sure.
We need, um, is there a wireless microphone that we have? We're gonna need something to pick up the conversation.
Okay, so I wanted to talk, and then I was gonna talk, so I'll have to try and do her part as well. So 873 Fifth Avenue is the old Sunset Banquet House up in Lansingburg. They bought this property a number of years ago, really, because they wanted the parking lot, but the city, I believe, owned it and was not willing to split up the property, the building from the parking lot, they needed the parking lot for their catering business. When they bought it, there was a roof collapse in part of the building. So since they purchased it, they demolished the part with the collapsing roof and smoothed out the property. And, um, they started using the remainder for storage for their catering business. I believe the plumbing was in the demolished portion, so that the building doesn't even have water anymore at this point in time. So the issue is, hi. My phone's at the office. She's probably trying to call me. Hi. Yep. I'll start, and then we'll let you fill in, fill in the blanks. So it was my understanding that when you purchased it, that there was a part with the roof that was collapsing, you demolished that. $60,000 was, $45,000, okay, sure. Okay, now it's better, okay. So $45,000 for that demolition, and, you know, to get a grassy lot next to, next to the building. Were the utilities in the portion that was demolished, or are they in the remaining portion? Like, is there water and sewer in the remaining portion?
It was in the demolition.
Okay, so the remaining portion doesn't have water and sewer service, okay. Electric.
We weren't aware of how bad the building was when we purchased it, can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me? We weren't aware of just how bad the building was when we purchased it, it was part of three parcels. We really wanted the parking lot across from our catering company because we needed it for parking. And the person who owned the Sunset had moved to Florida, and we had been renting that parking lot for when he was in business. So it seemed like a smart thing, we needed it, but we were forced to buy three parcels just to get the one. And then we're told that it needed to be demolished. And it was during the demolition, wasn't it, that somebody from the city said that the portion that's still standing was structurally sound? Because that was slated to go down, too. And then we said, oh, actually, that's great, we use it for storage. And then, here we are. Here we are.
Yes, okay, so storage is not an allowed use in that zone.
Which we didn't know.
It's a B3 zone, and the lot size is not conforming. It's, um, it's existing, but it doesn't conform to the ordinance. So we all know that our ordinance is very old and aspirational for a different kind of city than what we have. The ordinance in that area is calling for 25,000 square foot lots, 10,000 square foot buildings, and uses like retail home furnishing stores, wait a minute. Not even getting to that. Indoor theaters, department stores, indoor commercial facilities, factory outlets, vocational and trade schools, supermarket. Does allow for some more smaller uses, convenience store, grocery store, delicatessen boutique, gift shop. So the ordinance does not match the neighborhood. Some properties out on the Turnpike Road, would you say, did do this. They demolished lots of buildings, they have 100-foot setbacks, big parking lots in front, large commercial buildings. That never happened over here, it was the Sunset Banquet House. So what we've got is a 14,000 square foot lot that's oddly shaped, bounded on three sides by roads, with a 5,000 square foot building that doesn't even have utilities in it. Let's see. So in order to meet the ordinance, really, you would need to aggregate a bunch of lots and, you know, to come up with enough land to do the kinds of things that they're looking for in the previous ordinance. We know that the ordinance is being revisited, and we have seen a vision for the future where the road that goes past the northern edge of this property is gone, and that parcel is aggregated with the next property to the north, and there's a vision for housing there. Housing that's similar to the housing that's in the neighborhood already. So really, what the Pettits are asking for is they would like to continue using the building for what they've been using it for. It's not very suitable for much else. They're not in a position to do much else at the time, although I think they have ideas for it in the future. Their business has been severely impacted by the pandemic, and they're just now recovering from that. So we were looking for a use variance to use that property for storage. At the very least, we hope you would give them a temporary use variance, which they would have to renew each year until such time that they've got the funds to do something else that's compatible with the current zoning. But what they're looking for right now is a use variance, if you can see your way clear to that. Now I'm gonna let them talk to you about their situation and why they would like you to grant the variance, because they're not in a position to redevelop the property at this time.
Um, okay, so, hi, I'm Jim Pettit. I'm one of the owners and president of Old Daily Catering Company and affiliated businesses. COVID-19 obviously was a huge impact on us. Before COVID-19, we were meeting with Code to go over a, clearly just a, clean it up, make it look right, do the exterior, but keep it as a warehouse, because we don't have any use that we can use for it. Now, as I've told, you know, the mayor and deputy mayor prior, if you have somebody that's got a vision for it, has no parking. The lot next to it, we tried to buy, we couldn't buy, somebody was going into it and just, basically just put over a parking lot, and now it's out of our price range, they won't talk to us for under $240,000. So without a parking anywhere, an odd-shaped lot, this building has literally no other uses. So either we come to an agreement of saying, okay, let's look to the future and see, and I wouldn't stand anybody's way, if they wanted it, I can get storage elsewhere. However, um, I can't make this something that has people come to it without any parking, there is no way. As it was stated earlier, the only reason I bought this property at all was because they were gonna sell my parking lot with it. And whether you know or not, we have 50 employees at that place. Without a parking lot, I have to move, there's just no question about it, there's nowhere to park these people. So we bought that. Previous to the COVID-19, we had plans of, you know, doing the parking lot, doing all these things, we were meeting with the city actively on it. That hit, and right now, we are lacking funding for sure. We have not gotten any of the federal grants yet, other than the PPP, which doesn't allow us, under hardship, severe hardship. It's gonna take us a couple of years to get back to where we were. We've reduced our staff by half, and we're now working our way past that. So, uh, that being said, um, we don't like it any better than you do. The lot, we really went through lots of things, what can we do without parking on that corner? If any of you know that area, you can't even park across the street, there is no parking, so, sure. Yeah. Well, it's both of them, the big parking lot and the parking lot between, between the houses. Mm-hmm. It is.
The small little lot, though, is the neighborhood use.
But it, it.
It is our lot.
It is, but it's 12 cars. Yeah. So any sizable investment, 12 cars would be a very hard, especially there's no street parking. So other places in the city go, well, they don't really have a lot of parking, but they have street parking. There is nowhere on the street to park in that whole five-corner area, there is none.
If you were to put a brewery in it, or if you were to do something retail, like a restaurant.
Not enough parking to fortify, yeah, especially because there's no street parking, that's another thing, right. Mm-hmm. Yes. That's why we bought it.
Yeah, right, okay, for the big lot.
Right. We asked to have it separated and asked to buy just the lot, and they were not willing to do that. Yeah.
And we do use every, and I know you do.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, no, that's fine. Anybody have any other questions about the? Nothing. I had none, I knew that without the parking lot, we had to move. If they sold, if they sold. If they sold the business, or sold that lot, we would have lost the only parking lot for 14 delivery vehicles and 40 to 50 employees. We still have a parking deficit, but in that, we could do it. We did. We didn't. They didn't ask what we were doing with it, they just said, and? I, I, I don't remember.
Yeah. What's fair is that when they, when we bought the building and we only wanted the parking lot, they, you gotta come up with something to do with the building, we didn't know it needed to be demolished. We were like, eh, maybe someday we'll put a restaurant in it, it's got a kitchen in it, but it was never like a real plan, the plan was.
Yeah. No.
No, it was.
To go back, I, I understand you're kinda like, oh, well, here's the reason. We're looking at it as going, this is an, this is something that's gonna hit us, and we're done, we have to move. This was, can we get this property, how much is it, we need the parking lot. That was a, we lose 50 jobs, we lose a center of our kind of different universe, and I would have bought it, and if they said it was gonna be a laundromat, I had to get the property to get that parking. That was our first, that's it, it was, yeah. Sure. Yes.
Here's the truth, I don't remember.
I don't either. Yeah, yeah.
For all those years. You know that we didn't know that it wasn't, here's an interesting thing, we didn't know it wasn't zoned for a warehouse.
No, we, we didn't. It was literally, within a week, them telling me, we're not separating it, here's what you can do to buy it, and you get the lot. And that was just like, okay, let's go to square one, we need the lot.
But more important is this, you know those letters you get in the mail that say that it's a vacant building? We had no idea until I started working with Wiza on that property next door to Old Daily, that fell through the house. That she said, you know that that, you're not going to the warehouse, and I said, please, I thought the city was upset because they thought it was a vacant building, because it's tedious, and that we didn't have utilities there. And so that was the whole confusion, like, when we went down and met with James and Dave, Sharon in the city, we talked about the potential, like, God, in a perfect world, we could put business in it, but right now, we needed a storage. How do we clean it up, they said you gotta bring it up to Code, we said, okay, we talked about getting drawings done, and then COVID hit.
Yeah, but you say COVID hit, but COVID hit in 2020, and you bought it in 2015.
No, correct, our first meeting with them was in, um, in 2020, you're right. More than just that, but all the while, we thought it was okay to be a warehouse, we thought you were upset that it was vacant.
Well, I, yeah, it was ugly looking 10 years before I bought it, and no one had done a thing. Right, when we became our property, we immediately put in $45,000 to get rid of the part that was.
It's a hit, we know. What did you hear, did you say we bought it?
No, no, and there, you know, there are several allowed uses.
The original application mentions the Sunset, which is this facility. And it says, we would actively pursue professional guidance for the demolition, which was for parking, and improvements needed to sustain a viable business tenant on the property. Ending this advice, if permanent needed, work would begin. And that's, that's the last little paragraph of the description of what they were gonna do with all three properties.
And the city's foreclosure process, or making building sales process is a merit-based program. So it's not the highest bidder that wins the project every time, it's based on the proposal that people submit. So when somebody says, we're going to do this with the property, the city sells the property based on what that applicant had said.
I would say that that really wasn't, when I came with the city, I was really worried because here we are having a viable business with a lot of people being put to work, and then we're gonna have to move somewhere, not necessarily in the city. And when I met with them, they were like, well, look it, well, let's do this, but you have to take ownership of the building. You have to take care of the demolition, which was a huge expense. And, you know, it's not that easy to come up with, oh, okay, we're gonna do that, and we're gonna spend a million dollars, we have no parking. We have, we tried to come up with uses, we don't have any uses, there is no parking. I tried to buy the building next door, and that would have given us parking, we were thinking to move our production over there, keep the offices there, and that wouldn't work, because we don't have enough places to park or access the building. We don't have, we have that little triangle in the side of it, and then we have a little strip alongside of it. So every way we looked at this building, and then we came to the agreement, okay, look it, let's go in and get the thing cleaned up. We don't know what the use is gonna be, but let's clear up the outside of the building, and just get it cleaned up, get it done in a way that everybody looks at it and goes, okay, that's, I don't know what it is, but it's, it's clean. The intentions on the paper, as anybody knows here, that anyone does business, your intention first is to survive. Survival meant the parking lot, that's why I bought it, and that's why I put $45,000 in a building that need to be demolished, that the city had had ownership of for 10 years, and did not clean up, and it was a danger. I went in immediately and put that money into it. So that was our intention, is to get it and to figure out something for it. And the, up in that area, there isn't really a, wow, everybody wants to do business here, it's not that easy. And the road alongside of it was never come out with, oh, you can get the road, and that would give you the parking. That's over a water main, as we found out. So there was a lot of, you know, this and that going on, but nothing made it really viable. And like I said, I, I've often told the deputy mayor, if you've got somebody that's coming in and goes, hey, I want that, they got something, I'll step aside from it, take it. I have no problem with that, I don't have that use for it.
So, one thing that's, one thing that's a little confusing to me is you're saying there's, there's no parking, but you bought it because of a parking lot, can you just?
That's across the street, and you know the area at all?
Yes.
So you get, it's across the street and up on Northern Drive.
He's not talking about across the street from 873, it's confusing me, too.
Oh, right.
You know Old Daily Catering?
The parking lot across the street from the, from.
Parking lot across the street between Fifth and Sixth, that was the main.
Those were sold together.
That's right.
What came along for the ride was 873, 876, the Sunset, and a smaller little triangle.
What he said, yes.
So those are not, they're not connected now, right?
No.
They're separate parcels.
They're separate parcels.
Have you tried to sell the Sunset property?
No.
Okay.
Well, I can't, if I could, that's right. No, the parking down the street from the building.
They don't use 873 for anything.
They do, sure.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
But, but the, you don't use the lot, the area in front of the building.
No.
So, so I guess one of my concerns is, is obviously, storage is not an allowed use in that zone, it's not part of, you know, the kind of uses that we'd like to see. I understand the economics, you know, you can say that people aren't knocking down your door to buy the building from you, but it also sounds like you haven't tried to sell the building, and then on, on top of that, I mean.
Well, storage in a catering company is not, not use of a building, it's an actual necessity. We do, you know, we're, we're there, it's there, and only when we came to this, where it's like, oh, this isn't zoned for that, because we were moving towards remodeling the building to get it cleaned up, looking great, and, you know, it's a, it's a warehouse. Now we find out it's not zoned for that, so now we're in a quandary. We can move forward and get it cleaned up, but we can't do is go, I'm gonna put a million and a half dollars, which is the going rate for that square footage in our industry. I don't have that now, and, and, and nor would I, because the parking deficiency would stop us from anything that we can think of doing in that property.
So, so a couple, a couple things there, I mean, I understand that, you know, for your industry or for your use, you guys are in there often, and that feels like it's being used, but from the outside perspective, a vacant building or a storage facility, they kind of have a similar interface with the community, and that's the main reason, exactly. And that's why the city is not legalizing that use in, in the rezone update, or we have no intention to, you know, encourage more storage facilities to open.
Sure.
And then the other aspect is that, you know, you're saying that you purchased the property to have the parking lot, I understand that, and that you didn't have a plan for that parcel at the time, or the building at the time. You said earlier that you still don't really have a plan for that building going forward.
Not, it's not according to your uses, no.
And to, to get a use variance, for this board to grant a use variance, it would legalize that storage facility in perpetuity. So that is a major concern for, for the city, because, again, we have no intention of legalizing storage facilities there. To grant this exception would then solidify that use as an allowed use. Whether it's Old Daily, or the Pettit family, or you do end up selling it, somebody else could come in, and they could do storage there. And that's something that we are concerned with as well.
Okay, Katie has something to add. I just, it's not actually a question, I just, for me, the bottom line is that we are charged with a tax, and we have to meet, there's a few periods that we're in, and have to meet the requirement, and it just doesn't. Personally, you know, a lot of what, what James said is the reason. We don't know whether or not it can yield a reasonable economic return, and it's only due to the purpose in that building, it hasn't been attempted since the Sunset, when I was. And I understand that you did not know that it wasn't zoned for storage, but as the property owner, that onus is on you and not us. So we can't say that the use of the variance was not self-reasonated.
Okay, so, yeah, so, uh, to speak to that, I've been the victim of many of these things, and I don't like it for the city to grant these kind of things, because I live in the city, and I've lived in it all my life. I have a lot of investment in the city and in the Rensselaer County. I get that this is not what you. I get that this is not what you would want. I'm looking for anybody, tell me what you want me to, you want me to sell the building? I'll sell the building and parcel off the parking. That will, and that will make the building incapable of sale. The, the other thing.
I'm sorry, you're saying there are not three separate parks?
They are three separate.
Right, you can just sell one, you don't have to sell parking up six.
No, no, I would could just sell, but without parking, you have really just said, who would come there? I can sell the little lot and I would, if somebody had a better use for it.
Well, I'm, I'm not a developer and I'm not a key of the life of the city, but it's not even about that. It's about the fact that this is not being half, you know, half.
Okay, so a long, yep, I, I, I get that. A long time ago, when I was at the other original Old Daily Inn site on Second Avenue, that property, our property next to the building and then another property burned down. I had a plan for that lot, to put up a party room to go along with the restaurant and would have basically been a, a saving grace to us. That was the use there. B-zone, not supposed to put up a house. And if you did, it had to stay with the setbacks and it had to be a, like the, the city. The city pushed forward and allowed a, a trailer to go there, basically, or a, whatever, what do you call those house? Prefabbed house. That's right. That's right. His house burnt ours down.
I was on the zoning board then too.
I remember.
And I remember too. And, um, the man has been eternally grateful for the fact that we did that for him. He still lives there.
I would be eternally grateful too.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm just saying, there is certainly a little bit of leeway.
That's right.
Things like that.
Exactly.
I don't see that, I mean, Katie's right in what she said. I just want to ask one more quick question. Did some, one of you say something about a temporary use variance? What's your, um, what, could you explain that to me? And then we'll get the opinion of the.
Yep, so it's my understanding that we could ask for a temporary use variance.
And what does that mean?
That is, I believe it gives them, is it one year to use the use? Use it as that use? You'd have to come back and renew it if you want to. That would give them a chance to market that building. If they, uh, market the building and nobody buys it, then that gives them the argument to come back and say, it's not viable for uses in the zone, we can't sell it. And they could ask for the use variance at that time. I will point out that this is accessory to the catering business around the corner. It's all storage for the catering business. So even though it's on a separate property, if this was one big, huge property, uh, like if they were in the old Price Shopper, they could have the cooking in there, the storage, the parking, all in one property. But that's just not the way it is. It's all accessory. And when they were renting the parking spaces, that is a compatible use with the banquet hall when that was in use, because they work, use workers in the daytime and a banquet hall is generally an evening activity. So those parking uses were complimentary, where when, if they do sell that building, they wouldn't be interested in, uh, letting the parking go with it, because they need that parking. So, but yes, we, uh, definitely at a minimum, they're paying $5,000 a year in vacant building fees, because it's not an allowed use. And as you see, they really didn't understand, they were getting these letters, they're paying the fees. They didn't understand that they were getting the letter, because they were using the building for not an allowed use. They thought maybe because it was not being kept up well or. So they're, they're willing to fix it up, uh, and, you know, they're in tough straits now, but they know they need to fix it up. And, um, anyway, we would like at least to have a temporary use variance.
What you meant by temporary use variance.
Okay.
I have a question though. If we sell it for gambling, we're now out $4,000 per acre. So what does the zoning say if I try to put a bank of garages in my parking lot right across the catering?
I don't know. By the time you do that, we could always not be on the zoning board anymore. So that really just seems very, very fair thing.
We need a storage.
And I really don't think that we, any of us should look at the fact that, I mean, I think you've alluded more than once to the fact that, you know, you're successful in Troy and if you don't get there, you should leave. I, 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 I don't like that.
No, I didn't say that.
No, I got that impression.
You had to leave.
Yeah, I got that impression. Like we didn't have the parking lot and all that. No, I understand all that.
No, that building wouldn't work without a parking lot. We don't want it to leave. We totally developed that property.
No, I, I understand. All I'm saying is, okay.
Steph or Miss Beth?
James or?
Go ahead.
Somebody about, um, the temporary use variance, how do you feel about that?
Generally, variances run with the land, which means, once you grant it, it's in perpetuity.
Right.
And it wouldn't, irrespective of whether or not they continue to own it, they could sell it, it runs with the land. You do have the ability to impose durational restrictions as a condition on the approval of variance in very limited circumstances. And you would have to justify the limitation and have a reasonable relationship between why you're placing the time limitation on it and the grant of the variance. If it's not a reasonable relationship, if there isn't a reasonable basis for the durational consideration, you run the risk of having the, the durational, uh, con- condition lifted by a court, then it would run in perpetuity. So if you're considering granting a use variance, uh, with a, a, a time restraint on it, um, we should discuss carefully what the rational basis for that time constraint would be. I would think, oh, we are in unique times. You know, COVID has been a pandemic. It's once in a century pandemic. There is no question that the business that the Pettits are engaged in has been literally devastated by, by the pandemic. Um, I think that could be a legitimate consideration of this board to grant, um, some type of, uh, variance with a time restriction on it, so that enforcement of the zoning code and forcing them to find another storage location doesn't add to the burden they're already facing because of, of the COVID pandemic. So I think that arguably would be a logical and rational basis. Uh, but the important component of it is tying it, having a reasonable basis and tying it to something. Rather than just saying, we'll, we'll like, we'll give you six months and let you figure it out and then, you know, come back with something. As long as you have a rational basis, that, that's how you can put a time restraint.
Sounds like it would be, the time would be used to try to market the property for something else or relocate the storage use or something along those lines.
That, that would be totally up to them, right?
To, to answer your question earlier, to answer the question earlier about, you know, what if we wanted to put storage across the street from us, build garages, whatever? It's, it's that principal use that's not allowed. So you, you can't have the principal use on that lot be storage. Every single business in the city of Troy uses a significant part of their footprint to store goods that they're not selling at that time or they're not using at that time. We understand that. There's nothing wrong with storing stuff on your property. That's not the issue. The issue is that you don't have that interface, you know, we're not going to get into the minutia or the subjectivity of, of planning and what makes, you know, those interactions important. But that's what would make it legal, would be having a, an entity in there as the principal use or the primary use and then having storage.
And the shams storefront, I'm not a saint. Like the food is prepared over here, but I'm just saying, in technicality, I could make it have interface.
I, I am not suggesting a loophole, just to be clear.
What if we took the building down? Just had a vacant lot.
Then it's a vacant lot.
$5,000 a year for a vacant lot, there's no use on it.
So, no, no, it wouldn't be, the, the, no, that would be, a vacant lot would be an allowable use. The, the, uh, if you still have a reverberant place, it would be, it would be released and the property would be vacant. You know, grass, grass lawn.
I think the real question is, there's $4,000 per acre of.
But we can't do it, so it's not allowed.
So that has to go somewhere.
I don't mind the temporary nature of, of the variance. I think it's a good idea. The, the problem I see with the temporary nature of it is, in a year, either the problem has gone away or they've invested more money into the structure that's there to make it look better.
That's exactly.
And now they've invested that money and they're gonna come back and what do you think? They're gonna, you, you think they're not gonna ask to renew the variance? Right, because of course, it would be money into it, why wouldn't you?
And then presumably the board says no.
So I, I think if ultimately you don't want storage there, giving a temporary variance might not make sense, because you're really kicking the can down the road and giving the Pettits a false hope that eventually it's gonna be an allowable use and it may never be. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that helps.
But if we do it, market it, sell it.
Yeah.
And nobody buys it, then you might be inclined to say it may have, or getting a huge. And does, does granting a temporary variance, uh, contribute to applying to the law?
Yes, it would, it would. It would allow them to, uh, the, the building would then be open for inspection. It would get a certificate of compliance. We could, the verter could be released, all of those things could happen. At the end of the year, they would simply be given a notice to vacate if they did not have some other approval in place to allow the use to continue.
So, piggybacking on what Andy said with respect to this being a once in a century situ- situation there, where it may be a situation where you meet the threshold, you could apply for a temporary use variance. But also talking to what Katie said in respect to this being a self-created issue, because at the time of the purchase, as I, I questioned the, the city earlier, the uses were the same. You could have investigated what the uses were when it was a property. So, can you articulate, based on what Andy has said, why this would not be a self-created hardship, based on everything that's happened, at least in the last 18 months?
It is a self-created hardship. I agree with you. Uh, it was created though, however, as I go back, we had no choice at that time. When the city came to us, and they came to us to say, hey, if you want to keep your parking lot, take our problem here and take the part time it is, or the house, the whole thing.
Let me cut you off. So, let me, let me try this again. So.
He's trying to help you. He is.
So, based on the fact that the pandemic has caused significant hardship to your business and has required you to change the way in which you do business.
Yeah.
And requiring probably additional stores within that building at 873, can you articulate to the board why it isn't a self-created hardship to continue to use that property as a storage facility against what the uses from the city code would say?
All right, thank you. Um, yes, the, the, so, the hardship obviously turns to, a catering business does not operate with a lot, without a lot of support material. Tables, chairs, tents, things like that. They really can't operate without some amount of storage. And while we had storage all around the city, in different little garages and things, it was not something that someone could thrive in our industry in doing. So consolidating that ended up being a very good use for us.
And it only could occur this way because of the fact that the pandemic had forced you to change the way in which you operated your business.
Yes, of course. And all of that, you know, listen, the pandemic, and, you know, you can lead me to that water. I, I, I understand what you're wanting and, and it, and it did. But to be truthful, I don't need to skirt around and get everybody going into a falseness. The thing I did was buy it to survive. And now I'm trying to do something to survive that allows us to do business in the way that we're doing. This is not a time where we're going, oh, let's just throw a million and a half dollars in a business that nobody comes to anymore. They just got out of their masks. We're gonna have another hard two years. That's just the, the facts of it. The facts of it are, we will do everything in our power to go right now and say, as we were doing pre-pandemic, is moving towards making it desirable for that community to look at. Now, the inside will not be something that there's commerce. I'm not gonna promise that, I can't do it. I know now by the research that we've done, how much parking, the availability, how you pull in, it's not really viable for those things. But that doesn't mean it has to be the scourge on the neighborhood that it is currently. And we would love to do that. But as you pointed out, if I go and do that, then I gotta come back and go, well, it's still not in use. So it's kind of like this conundrum that I'm caught in to say, well, I, if I have to sell it, if there's no way the city can see through it to say, we're gonna make it look right. It'll look right. Now, it won't be the use that I want and it doesn't even have to be a sellable use. Uh, and I don't know what that takes, where you say, well, when you sell it, it reverts back to no storage. I don't know. I don't know how that, all that works. Alls I can say is, we need storage. We're going to have to move to that. We've expanded over the years and we are a good thing for the city. We provide jobs, as we have always done. And in the case that we were talking about earlier about next door to Old Daily, I did move. I had to. It wasn't a, I'm gonna move, it's a, I'm gonna have to move. And that's where I am. Now, at that time, I was 30 years old. Now I'm telling you now, we need to have certain facilities and certain things to happen for us to be a partner in. We've been a good partner, we pay our taxes, we pay all these things and we do it without any problems. And we have. We all have investments in the city. We, uh, my three partners, we all have, uh, houses in the city that we have done, uh, and brought back. That being said, this is now a COVID situation that I can't turn around. I, you could say, what did you do four years ago? I can't speak to that, I can speak to now. Now we're in a problem where we have, we cannot be experiencing added costs. And now we're gonna come down on you now. Well, I can't do it. But I will, if you want, move my storage and sell. I can do that, if that's what you guys want. But that building will be unsellable, as it was the 20 years you guys had it. They had it for 10, but it was 10 down. They were trying to sell it. It's 20. 20 years, no one had interest. And that was before the fire. Zero, because of the things I stated. These are un, these are not good facts.
Well, also that, they have seen their own business comment of years. And it was really tough. And they had to think that.
Right.
But I, we're hopeful that the homework end becomes, of course, you know.
And we've been waiting a long time.
Where die hard. I'm from Albany, I've been to the city, I love people in the city.
I know.
We're embarrassed that we're allowed to go.
And that's why, what, what, my question would be, which is really in connection to do, I suppose, with the variance itself, is how long is it gonna take you to make it look, I mean, it doesn't have to look like it's on, uh, like your.
Well, no, no, we, we, no, we, we have, like I said.
It's gotta like the shrubbery and stuff, I mean, you know, the green, I don't know, the grass and it's yucky. I'm sorry to have to say that.
I, I bought a yucky place, yes. Yeah. Yeah. No. All right, so, so again, we, we get back to that circle.
I would just say this, it would be much more conducive for me to give you a temporary vote for a temporary use variance if I thought, when I walked by there, I am not constantly, and quite honestly, until this came up, I forgot that you people owned it. I just thought it was vacant and it all came back to me that way.
I don't really forget about it.
But my point is, it's not an attractive looking.
I, I, I got you.
And it has to be.
But we get back, we, hold on. We get, we get back to the point of, if I do that, you're not talking about waving a paintbrush on it. You're talking about a hundred.
Talking about at least waving a paintbrush.
No, no.
I just said, it doesn't have to look like.
Okay.
Wait, it takes a lot though.
Yeah, you, you, you need 150,000 and I'm committed to do that if I got a variance change. And I will do that on a time limit. But I can't do it if then next year you go, eh, still not gonna be that. I'm, I'm.
I think it would be halfway between 150,000 and what I say to do this.
You tell me what it is you would like me to do.
I just would like it not to look quite as unattractive.
We've looked at it quite a bit. Yeah, no, I get it.
So, we have, we obviously in the reverse, but we were planning. And we talked about it. And at a bare minimum, was addressing the landscaping, um, just, I mean, it's been a while, but, you know, just addressing the, the minor landscape changes. Like, um, fix all the holes. On the one side that is blocked, paint it. If you can afford it, side it. But on the side that, the side that's all chumped up, with, uh, the other verticals are fighting on it. And we do know these roots, because of root, because of leaking. And then there's this corner, we look at the front where.
You're, you're not touching that with a paintbrush. It's not happening. A paintbrush won't do it.
No, 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 but my point is.
We will clean, we'll clean it as best as we can, but if we have a variance change, we'll clean it to the level.
I understand that.
You guys are, you guys are.
I understand that.
You purchased the property at auction, right? So you're into it for whatever that was, I think it was several thousand, maybe a thousand.
And then the tax.
For all of them. And then if you're into it for the taxes over the period of time, you're into it for the vacant fees and then the 45K for demo, now you're talking about at least $30,000 in renovations to the building.
At very least, yeah.
Again, my only, the, the board can do what they'd like with the information they've presented, but my thing is, if it's temporary, I don't see how in a year's time, after now sinking another 30,000 into it, they're not gonna come back with the same, the same ask. Because now they just increased.
Because now they just increased the amount they need to sell property for to break even.
Well, they may, but it will give them time to market it. And if it doesn't sell, then they can come back to you with a valid reason of why it's not. You can't use it for the, yeah. And then maybe they could get their variance. Give them time to do one.
Market it after a year. After cleaning it up, yeah. If it doesn't sell, yes, we'll be back.
Okay, Jack or John, do you have anything to add?
Did I understand you to say you put in the application for the veteran grant but haven't received any?
That's right.
None at all?
Yeah, the PPPs. I got it.
Other than that? But did you file for the hardship and all?
Of course. As you, I don't know whether, how much people know about the hospitality business. We do nothing but seek them. The Restaurant Revitalization Act ran out of money within two days. They are now pushing through Congress to replenish it, which is the Replenish Act. If we get the Replenish Act, then we can be restored. If not, we, we took a hardship of four and a half million dollars in that year. So there is no like easy road.
There is. And I don't want you to think that because I'm kind of sticking to really what I drive it.
I hate to tell you, I am for you and against you all in the same thing. I live in the city. I have business in the city. I completely understand it. However, I'm caught in this position irregardless. I don't like it. I don't like having the crappiest property there is. And I wanted to fix it until our friend here came up with it's not apps, that's not your zone. And I'm like, well, what do you mean? We just, we'll make it right and bring the plumbing in and bring all that stuff to right and outside will look great. And we can't. So if we invest that money, come back in a year. Now we've lost another 30, 40,000. And it wouldn't look great at 30 anyway. It's, we've, we've had an architect on it. We, we know what we have to do. And our being held in the headlights like deer on this property was evaluating in all different way. We tried to buy the lot next to it. That would have made it viable for us. That's when we were going to move production facility in there. We have to look elsewhere. They, because they bought that and they would not move off it and even though they didn't have a use for it. So.
They came to us and they were denied. They want to put a car lot there. And you said, no, that's not a lot.
But I think a production facility would have been okay.
I mean, the look, but you know, something along those, yeah.
So speak to you though. I, we have applied for every grant available. It's my job. I'm believing for the last two months it's I've been round the block. And believe it or not, I've paid a lot. There's the disaster relief, which we did receive. And there's also PPP. But they are very specific in the way that you can use that response. This would not qualify. The difference is with the restaurant or the revitalization act, you're able to reimburse yourself. So as we reimburse ourselves for a cost already spent, we're essentially washing this. So that you can then spend it. But we, there are court cases in that because it was set up for 21 days that only minorities and businesses were hardship could apply. And it excluded businesses like us. It's been deemed by the Supreme Court in a number of states that was unconstitutional. In the meantime, it doesn't matter. The money's gone. We're waiting for funding. And that funding comes. There's our answer.
Well, it really doesn't answer this.
No, that's our answer to future building.
Did you have any questions, John?
No, no, I don't have any questions. I'm trying to I'm caught between supporting a local business, but it's been portrayed accurately as a choice between kicking the problem down the road or putting a variance in place that's there forever.
But it doesn't have to be. Oh, kicking it down the road would be for the year.
Right.
So what happens if you don't give us a temporary use variance? How do we exist?
You could go, you would not be able to use the building for storage.
Or you don't just keep paying $5,000 a year?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't keep paying $5,000 a year. It would be a bit, you'd have to pay the big.
You would do both. You would not use it for storage and you would pay the $5,000 a year.
I mean, I don't know. I'm, I'm not in the Code Enforcement Department. I don't know how they would prevent you from storing things in there. I don't know how that would work. But there are plenty of vacant buildings that people pay vacant buildings, building fees for, which I'm sure they have their items in there stored.
What was prior to us buying it? It would be used for storage. Buy a number.
Right, the city's vacant building program has changed over the past 10 years. We've significantly, we've been actively going after vacant buildings to get them to be.
So they support it?
Okay, so then where are we at?
The one, the last thing I'll add in. I hope you guys, you know, I think you understand, we're not trying to pick at you. I'll pick on you. We're just going through the process. But I'm not, I don't know that in six months or one year of having this temporary variance and then, you know, trying to sell it, that you would meet that use variance test. I just want that to be clear. Because I don't want you to receive a temporary use variance today.
And automatically think it's.
And think we can try, we can post it on for, for online for sale or go through a broker and post it for sale.
Limited effort and then we're.
And then you'll be able to say, oh, we have an economic hardship. I would, I just wanted, on the record now, you should thoroughly look through this and understand what you need to do to meet that use variance test next time around.
Of the uses that you said for that building?
No. What he's saying is.
Let, let him tell me.
Yeah, no, that, that would be great. But you know, if, if you try to sell this building as is and nobody buys it, that doesn't automatically mean that it's, you have an economic hardship. You know what I mean? You, you've kind of alluded, I won't put words in your mouth, but we can all imagine that nobody would want to buy the building as it is. I mean, it sounds like you guys wanted to buy it for the parking lot and not for the building. And, and so if you post the building for sale and nobody wants to buy it, I don't know that that's going to pass the use variance test and say, oh, we have an economic hardship because we tried to sell it as is. Because it's, it's not necessarily.
The economic hardship would come in is if we put money into it and still could sell it.
But that, okay.
But it doesn't take away the fact that it was self-created.
Nor, nor does it mean that none of the allowed uses in the B3 zone, which there are several, are not economically viable in that neighborhood. I understand that you're talking about a specific parking, you know, requirement that you're trying to hit for your uses. But you'd have to go through every single one of those uses and prove that those uses cannot yield an economic return. And I don't know that that's possible. And we, we would, to pass that use variance test, that's what we would have to understand.
But if I improved that building and used two thirds for office space, move the offices out. I'm just saying, two thirds of office space for our whole planning team, our all management tier. If I moved them over there and use the back, two thirds of it for storage, would I be? That was a conversation we had too. Was that we're so grand at Northern Drive. Was it maybe we moved the whole ministry group over there?
We can, we can look through the zoning code and we can talk offline. That is something that we could explore. I, I don't know off the top of my head whether or not that would work, but something like that could be a good alternative.
I guess what I, after hearing all these and, and again, I'm somber because this was a hell of a year. And so I agree with everything you're doing. And, and quite frankly, I'd be at the meetings saying, don't allow them to do it. That being said, I'm asking you guys to do it for a year. Give us an exploratory time to figure out how we can market, how we can sell it, move our storage in the meantime. Or use it one way or the other. We're going to need some time to do it. Just to move this stuff would be a hardship at this point.
Yeah. Hold what you want, but do we have a motion? Do we have to do a secret on this, by the way? Okay. All right, so that, sorry. You're right, the planning commission only. It used to be that way. Okay, do we have a motion then?
Can I, just for a second? When the planning commission reviewed this as a change of use, it was a type two for their purposes because it's a reuse of a building less than 4,000 square feet. However, the secret regulations specifically say unless a use variance is required. So since this is a use variance application, it, it would need a secret negative declaration to proceed.
Even though it says here that it doesn't?
Offices aren't allowed.
They are?
Yes. Offices, you have to have less than 10 employees.
Less than.
In the office. An office, a, a, a business office with less than 10 employees. So that's office employees.
Okay, Katie's going to make the secret.
Because if the intensity goes up, some more people are there.
Madam Chair, I move that for ZBA 2021-19 that the board finds a proposal to be a tax deduction with traditional inclusion. With assuming your determination that the project is not expected to cause an increase in our amount of debt.
Do we have a second? Okay, Jack McCann, second on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, do we have a motion on the proposal?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the use variance based on the facts that were laid out during the presentation with the stipulation that it be temporary use variance for the period of one year in which the applicant will be to come back. To seek a renewal.
I, I would delete out the language about requiring them to come back and just say that it's expressly conditioned that it's only valid for one year. If they choose to come back, that's up to them. If they find another use, then they don't have to come back. So just, you, I, I believe what, what you're proposing is a use variance to allow the building to be used for storage, but it's specifically conditioned upon a one-year timeframe only due to the current situation that them and their industry is under related to the COVID pandemic. So that it is suitable to place a time restriction on it to allow them to either bring the building into conformity with an allowable use or seek a, a use variance to allow it for storage.
Yeah, can we just say, as you said? Okay, you said that. You said you can do that. All right, so that's the motion. Do we have a second on the motion? Okay, second, Mark Pelosi on the motion. Jack McCann?
I'm understanding of your problem. You brought me to rock and hard place here. But I also know what COVID has done to our businesses. Not just the restaurant industry, but everyone else. So I, I'm going to vote to approve.
Okay, John Normile?
I'll vote yes to approve.
Mark Pelosi?
Yes to approve.
Katie McLaren? And Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. Good luck.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next case is.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And make sure everyone's, make sure everyone's switches are turned on. The, the next applicant, if it is not here.
Okay, right.
So I don't think that everyone would be heard during the last.
Okay. I am. I think I am.
I am. I think I am.
If you can't hear yourself out of the speakers, then I don't think it's being picked up.
Okay. Next case, PLZBA twenty twenty-one dash zero zero twenty, four hundred to four oh four Eighth Street, an area variance for minimum lot width deficiency. The applicant, Edward Haddad, is proposing a lot line adjustment with parcel one oh one point five three dash five dash fifty. This will decrease the lot width from seven, seventy-five, uh, feet to thirty-six point nine feet in the area from seven thousand five hundred and five square feet to three thousand three hundred and ninety-three square feet. The intent is to put the existing garage currently on one parcel, do I have to read that? On to par, uh, one oh one fifty-three, five fifty-three, onto parcel one oh one fifty-three, five fifty. Okay. That being said, Mr. Haddad, are you present?
Uh, Mr., yeah, actually, can you hear me? This is Joel Blickman.
We can hear you very clearly.
Oh, excellent. Uh, Ed, we're on. Mr. Haddad is actually on the phone with me right now. Ed, can you hear them?
I can hear you. I'm sorry that I have to do it this way, but I'm in the middle of a meeting that I couldn't avoid.
Okay. Mr. Haddad is with us.
Oh, all right. Well, in any event, then, sir, could you introduce yourself and tell us what Mr. Haddad wants to do?
Yes, yes. I am Mr. Haddad's business partner and co-owner of these buildings. Um, the intent is to move the lot line. We own both buildings, four oh four Eighth Street and three ninety-eight Eighth Street. And the intent is to, um, reduce the width of four oh four from seventy-five feet to thirty-six point nine feet, and to increase the width of the lot of three ninety-eight Eighth Street from twenty-five feet to sixty-three point nine feet. And the goal of that is to include the garage, uh, on the three ninety-eighth Eighth Street property. Um, effectively, it will, you know, as you can see, the three ninety-eight lot is currently at twenty-five feet. So now the smallest width will be thirty-seven feet. Uh, but, but the intent is to move the lot line so that the garage is included with three ninety-eight Eighth Street. We do own both properties.
Okay. So you totally lost me on all of that, except for the fact that basically nothing's going to change. Except the lot line.
Pretty much the lot line is going to move. That's it.
Right. But, but, but I, but when I drive by there, it's still going to look exactly the way it looks now.
Pretty, pretty. Who we sell four oh four Eighth Street.
So let's not, let's not carry on.
We would assume that the garage goes with three ninety-eight because it is.
Right. Yeah. Nothing is going to change other than, you know, maybe a, yeah, a fence in the back might, might get moved. That's about it.
And you can see there's a slew of people here in the audience that are opposed to this besides. You can't see them. There's at least fifty people here that don't want you to do this.
There's fifty people lined up that, that say they don't want it to move.
Yeah, I'm making a point. We don't have to carry on like we did with Northern Drive.
No, I hope not.
Does anybody have any, well, nobody's here to speak in favor. Now, according to our, um, new protocol, if there were other people who wanted to speak to this proposal, they would do so, could do so by Zoom or no? They'd have to be here. Didn't you say they'd have to be here?
Currently, we, uh, the way, the way we're interpreting the regulations is that the executive order, uh, that, that allowed us to conduct public hearings is not, is no longer in effect.
Right. So if somebody did want to be here, they would have to be in the.
I don't know that we, we have to do it. Um, I don't, I suppose we could, but I don't think we would.
Okay. Well, in any event, if no one's here in the audience to speak for you or against you, is there anybody else on Zoom? Um, who wants to speak? No? Just the three of you? Okay. Or three of us? We're in the middle. Does anybody here have any questions for the applicant? Okay. So that being the case, did you want to say something, Andy? Aw, come on.
Sorry, but I just want.
That's all right.
I want the applicant to confirm that they're aware that by moving the lot line, they're also shifting the shed onto the new property. If you look at the site plan, there's both the garage and the shed.
Oh, yes. Yes. We're, yeah, we're aware of the shed, of, of course. Yes.
Okay.
That, that would also be part of three ninety-eight. Correct.
All right. We don't want to be end up in small claims court with somebody saying, the shed was on my property.
No, and both properties are, belong to us.
Oh, yeah. Right. You own them all anyway. So you can argue with yourself, right?
Exactly.
Okay. So do we have any, um, we don't need an action, no action needed from C Chris. So can we have a motion from someone? It's an area variance. Katie will look it up.
Madam Chair, I will move to, uh, for ZBA twenty twenty-one dash twenty, I will make a motion to approve the area variance. Um, an undesirable change will not be produced in the character of the neighborhood. Um, this really can't be achieved by another method. It's not a substantial variance and it won't have an adverse effect on the neighborhood.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
John Normile seconds on the motion. Jack McCann? John Normile?
Yes, to approve.
Mark Pelosi?
Yes.
Katie McLaren?
Yes.
Kathy Conroy? Yes. Okay, you're all set. Go home and look at the property exactly as it looks right now. Okay. Now, do we have to, um, table the last one you said, James? That, you said table the, read it or just say we're going to table it?
I, if you could, um, I'd appreciate it if you table it to August. That way we do not have to relive this with that one particular project that's, uh, expense the city incurs.
So we're not going to, we're, we're not going, we're just going to table it?
Right. And it would be a motion to table PLZBA twenty twenty zero zero six one till the August meeting.
That sounded good as per Andy. Okay, we'll sit, we'll, uh.
Madam Chair, I move that we table, uh, ZBA twenty twenty dash zero zero six one until the August meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, Jack McCann. Motion to adjourn.
John seconds.
Hi. Bring your WD-40.